Everybody, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, June 24th meeting of the City Council of the City of Falls Church. If you would please rise and pledge allegiance with me.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Welcome, everybody. And if I can have the roll call, please.
Ms. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Kalen.
Yes.
Mr. Pepe. Mr. Pepe's not here. Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Tarter.
Here.
Mayor Baruch.
Here.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. If I can get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
If I can get a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Kalen on the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the meeting agenda is adopted. We don't have any proclamations this evening. Do we have anybody from the public here to be sworn in for new boards and commission members? Kathy, do you know if anybody's here?
No.
Alright, we are on to receipt of public comments. And I don't have any speaker slips. Ms. Pichao, any written comments that you'd like to summarize?
No.
Okay, council requests. Anything from council members? We are moving right along. We are on business on the agenda. Ms. Pichao, could you read the first item?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over Wyatt. (laughing) I was just moving right through this agenda, Wyatt.
How fast you're like this meeting.
Yeah, well, Wyatt.
Thank you for your presentation.
That's what happens when you send us a note saying you've got a presentation that the manager has portioned.
Thank you so much, it was great, yeah.
Thank you. Tonight, I wanted to take the opportunity to make a report to highlight some excellent work being done by the city staff and park committee with Fairfax County and our city volunteers in the city mentoring programs. We have two mentoring programs where youth that are ongoing in the city right now. And one is our one-to-one mentoring program, which has been established for about three years now. And our newer mentoring program, called the Rise, mentoring program, which stands for respect and integrity, self-esteem and courage, is trying to serve a slightly different population in the city. Before talking about these two programs, if I could ask the folks in the back row to come forward and just be recognized. And I will note, in particular, Meredith McKean, who with the City's Alliance for Youth and Northern Virginia Family Services, is our point person with the one-to-one mentoring program. And Megan Graham, with the City's Court Services Unit, is our leader for the new Rise mentoring program. And Megan is the proud mother of a newborn, like our mayor, has just had little baby Charis, and so Megan is very excited to be here tonight and also to leave as quickly as possible to get back home. But just very briefly, the one-to-one mentoring program is targeted towards the city's middle school students in building skills, knowledge, and attitudes to prepare them to be healthy, productive, and contributing members of their communities now and in the future. And it was established in 2009, and we've had 31 mentees go through the program, and we have seven youth and mentors that are currently paired together at the present time. And this is managed by the City's Alliance for Youth and Northern Virginia Family Services. And we always need new mentors for this project, for this effort, and for the Rise mentoring program. And this is really targeted to provide positive role models for teens who are involved in the City's Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court System and Aurora House. And we anticipate that our first matches will occur this summer, and we have two mentors trained right now and eight more in training. And this is Megan Graham's project that she's leading and getting established right A couple of comments from people who have been involved in the program or seen the results of it from our school system. We have seen huge improvements academically and behaviorally with the students who've been involved in our mentoring program. And from the mentors, mentees themselves, what are some of the things that they've had to say about it? And Meredith will also, I think, share some notes directly to the council about the program. Some of the things that are said is, "It's nice I can talk to her and tell her what happens with me." Having someone there to help you, it means that I have someone to talk to, having a really close friend, it means that I have another family. I'm not as shy, and I'm more confident in asking for help. I will say also that for the mentors that get involved, they have found, they can testify also how enriching it is for them to make that investment in time and to build a relationship with a young person who could help use some role model, role modeling and some friendship from an adult. And let me ask Meredith just to step forward and say a word or two about the mentoring program.
Okay. Thank you, really happy to be here. Meredith McKean from Northern Virginia Family Service. And Henry Amaya is actually the program coordinator, so he's onsite. One-to-one is a site-based program, so every Thursday, we're at the community center working with middle school students. So each middle school student is paired with a mentor. We also do academic activities, we do some group social skills activities, and then they have one-on-one mentoring time. So the goals of the program are really to help middle school students improve their academics, but also their social skills, life skills. And as you can see from some of the comments, we've had great outcomes in terms of some of the academic improvement, but we've also seen a lot of changes in the kids' self-perception. And what we know about mentoring and why we really appreciate the support, we're really planting seeds right now. So these are very young folks, and some of the results of the program, we probably may not even see ourselves, but as they reach adulthood, we know that having this consistent relationship is something that changes lives. So we're really appreciative, and we actually wanted, and I'm gonna pass it around, because it's very sweet, but we asked our mentors and our mentees to say thank you, first of all, for supporting the program, but we asked them to write a little bit about what does being in one-to-one mean to you. So I'm not gonna read you all of them, but one of them that I think is very poignant and really illustrates the importance of the mentoring program, this is from a mentee. "One-on-one means to me that I have a man to talk to because I don't have a dad at home. Also, it lets me have a lot of fun and get to know new people." So we think that's very important, so I'd love to, I don't know how we're gonna do that, but have everybody get a look at it.
Come forward, and Megan, did you have anything you wanted to add, or Leslin or Henry? Okay, alright.
And we will echo, we need mentors.
We do need mentors, yes.
Yeah. And so the information that's on the screen right now, for those looking, watching at home, is where you can go online to find out information about the program and how you can submit your name to serve as a mentor.
I would actually just add, for MBFS, it's www.mbf.org.
Alright, we'll get that on the city webpage as well.
If you all will come up and join us for photo. And Wyatt, thank you very much for bringing this forward, and thanks for everybody's great work on this, and especially our mentors and mentees for being in the program.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. We are on to business on the agenda. If I can have the first item read, please.
And counsel, I'll just jump in on this one. The first item on the agenda is an ordinance to set the fees for development services and for engineering of public works. And we do have additional public notice that we need to make on this because it's part of the zoning ordinance, and so we would just simply ask if this be deferred for tonight. It was advertised for second reading tonight, but we have one more hoop we need to jump through in terms of public notice because it's in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so if I can have the item read, and then we'll go ahead and defer it, I'm not gonna open it up for public comment.
Okay.
I'll read the item into the record to be deferred. TR 13-12, Ordinance to Amen and Devise, Chapter 15 and Part 2, Code of Ordinances, Article 2, Department of Development Services, Sections 15 through 20, 27 and 29, and Article 3, Department of Public Works, Section 15 through 36, Public Works Applications, Engineering, and Section 15-37, Public Works, Servant Forestry, to include updates to fees and language.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Foster, do we need a date by which to defer this to, or can we just defer it?
July 22nd.
Yeah, my recommendation is you defer it to a date certain, I believe July 22nd is the planned date.
July 22nd. If I can get a motion to defer this item to July 22nd, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to defer this item to, or decision on July 22nd.
If I can get a second, please.
Mr. Tarter.
Yes.
Come on.
If I can get a second, please.
I move to second, or second.
Wow, I think Mr. Tarter's still on vacation. Alright. If I can have the roll call.
Got you, Mr. Tarter.
The motion is to defer the item to July 22nd, made by Ms. Berry, seconded by Mr. Tarter. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The next item before you, counsel. You'll see in your package, you have some new information that was presented today. TR 13-17, there's a revised version. Ordinance to authorize sale of city's water system under agreement of sale conditioned upon passage of November 2013 referendum and approval of boundary adjustment.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is before you on second reading, an ordinance to authorize the sale of the city water system. That ordinance is required by Virginia law. The ordinance basically follows on the November negotiated mediation in federal court. I would like to just take a minute and outline the key terms of that mediated settlement. First, the city water system will be sold to Fairfax Water for $40 million in cash, plus a boundary adjustment that is the subject of a separate proceeding before the Commission on Local Government. That boundary adjustment will involve two areas within the city. The first is what's commonly referred to as the George Mason, Mary Ellen Henderson campus up near the intersection of Route 7 and Haycock Road. The second area is near the property yard on Gordon Road. And the total acreage for those two sections of land is about 40-plus acres. The benefit to the city with that and the school board and the community is obviously the future redevelopment potential of the school property. That will be subject to, obviously, a community decision and discussion, as well as involvement from city council and the school board, since the school board does own one of those parcels. Other key terms are a three-year guarantee of employment for all city water employees at comparable pay and benefits. Also, the current water rates are to be brought down to the Fairfax water level within two years of the closing under this agreement. And so, in sum, this negotiated settlement is really the proverbial win-win. The final decision, though, will be up to the qualified voters of the city at a November referendum, where they will consider the terms that I've just outlined and decide whether they want to authorize the sale of the city water system or not. Also, as part of this process, we have an agreement of sale that should be attached to the papers you have in front of you. We have been working diligently with the legal team, Michael Klein and Pat Taves, both of whom are here this evening, to get that really to the final point that it is at now. The Commission on Local Government has requested that the agreement be approved by the city council and sent down to them by this Wednesday, the 26th, hence the need to take action this evening. Now, the clerk did make reference to revised ordinance that should be in your packet. Those revisions do take into account one issue, and that is actuary information that we are waiting on from Fairfax Water, Aon actuaries. And the approval this evening is conditioned upon that information being provided, and it confirming that the approval of this ordinance and agreement of sale is in the financial best interest of the city. And so with that, Mr. Klein and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel members, any questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question about the valuation. My recollection is that the number that we received, it was a range, something in the high 30s to the low 40s. It is accurate to say that the number that we settled on, the $40 million number, is well within the reasonable range for the value of the system, especially considering the value, as you noted, of the boundary adjustment. I prefer to call it annexation, because I think that sounds like an awesome word. And people, I think, do need to understand that we are gaining territory in the City of Falls Church, which is something, as far as I know, that hasn't happened since our founding. So we will be 2.3 square miles. At any rate, the combination of the value of cash and of the boundaries adjustment is well within the range of valuation given to us by the outside evaluators. Is that right?
It is, Mr. Duncan. The outside appraisal that we had prepared had a value of $40 million to $44 million. And so this number of 40 cash plus the boundary adjustment certainly is within that range.
Other council members? Mr. Kalen?
Thank you, John. Just a question for you, or clarification, I should say. The issue regarding the actuarial calculations, which is something I've been raising, the issue, as I see it, is one of just to making sure that the numbers that are produced are consistent with the mediated agreement by Judge Buchanan. And that's what you mean by, in the city's best interest, means that it's consistent with that?
That's correct.
That part of the agreement.
Yes.
So it's not that it's supposed to be specifically beneficial to one party or another, it's just to make sure that the agreement is followed through according to the terms.
That's correct.
The other question I have would be for Wyatt. Assuming that it is approved tonight, do you have a specific plan? I mean, other than a public, you know, town hall or something, is there something a little bit more disaggregated that we're going to be doing to reach different neighborhoods and so forth, a little bit more retail presentation about what this sale means prior to the actual referendum vote? Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's very important that the public, which will be called upon to cast a vote on this agreement in November, is well informed about all the issues associated with it. And so, working with the City's Office of Communications, we have a basic campaign that we're laying out, and we'll be able to describe that in mid-July. We do want to, I think there's a couple of different aspects to it. One is simply having all the information in a publicly accessible place, the library and on the city webpage. But also to engage with groups within the city, to have town hall meetings that provide an opportunity for people to ask questions about it and gather information directly face-to-face with city officials as well. So I think those would be the two main ways that we'll try to get information out to the public prior to casting a vote.
Any other council members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just a couple of comments. It's probably relevant to review quickly why we're here. We're here because of a circuit court decision that basically removed the ability of the city to take a fair rate of return, which was not appealable as of right in most states as an intermediate appellate court. There is no such intermediate appellate court in Virginia, and so appeal was a matter of discretion from the Virginia Supreme Court. And secondly, then when the city tried to adopt, tried to react to that, our attempted sale was blocked by a decision from the Army Corps of Engineers. So we're here for those reasons, but the end result is it's a mediation, and as I think the city attorney indicated, the best that we could come up with and the best for the city under the circumstances, and there are some significant upsides. Now, quickly on the agreement, there's the finances, the basic financial aspects of the agreement are on page eight, as I understand it.
That's correct.
And then, with regard to employees, that's on page 43. I just want to set forth for the record just the key elements of the agreement. I think you did in the mediation, but I want to make sure that those are readily available. And then with regard to the rates, I'm not sure that was mentioned, but that our rates within two years are to go down to the level of rates paid by other Fairfax County, other Fairfax water customers.
Yes.
Right?
That's correct.
So that's an important part. And then there are a number provisions about assets, and then the giving the city effective control over more of the property owned by the city in the county is very, very significant. I just wanted to call attention to all those provisions and a little bit of why we're here. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Other council members? I just had two quick questions. John, can you just point us out to the section that was revised most recently?
You referring in the agreement, Mr. Mayor, or the ordinance?
Yes. I believe it was the agreement that was revised to deal with the actuarial? Or was that the ordinance that was revised?
Yeah, the ordinance was revised, as we'd talked about just a minute ago, to basically make it clear that the approval this evening is conditioned upon that actuarial information coming in, and as Mr. Kalen indicated, being consistent with the federally mediated terms, but equally as important being in the city's financial best interest.
What line is that on?
You referring on the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. If you could bear with me, it should be the revised ordinance that was provided in your packet. I just need to pull it up here. This is at lines 6, 6 through 18.
It's in the very beginning, okay. Thank you, yep. And...
On page, page 31 of the agreement of sale.
And on page 31 of the agreement? Thank you. And am I correct that this agreement is with, between the city and just the water authorities? Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And that the federal government at this point is not involved? Is that right?
Federal government is not a party to this agreement.
I would just note for the record that should the federal government be implicated somehow, I'll need to not be involved in those types of discussions or transactions or have my name associated with that. So, John, if you'd just keep me apprised of that, just know when to step out of anything that bears on the... Anything else, counsel? Vice Mayor Snyder?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to follow on Mr. Kalen's question. So presuming this gets voted up tonight, the council have taken a position recommending passage of the referendum in November. Are we constrained in any way, as individuals or as a group, in advocating that position? Or are we obligated, the other side of the coin, to explain the contrary agreement in the voter referendum? How, what's our legal standard?
You've raised an important issue, and I think it certainly will merit some follow-up. I can tell you this evening, the Virginia code is very clear, that the city cannot take an advocacy position with respect to this referendum. They can provide factual information, but factual information only. Regarding whether, you know, individual council members can take positions, I need to look into that and get back to you on that. We need to be obviously careful in complying with the Virginia code, but I don't want to just give you a, you know, shoot-from-the-hip answer this evening. So I will circle back to you on that.
Okay. I think with that in mind, Mr. Mayor, if I could beg your indulgence for just a minute or two more, since this is probably the most physically consequential ordinance I'll ever vote on as a council member, I just wanted to say three things for the record. First, the Falls Church water system is older than the city itself, dating to the 1930s, and I want to thank all the people who, over the decades, have run the system with dedication and high competence, right up to today's workforce, who in this water sale agreement are given a three-year job guarantee, as was explained, and, I believe and hope, will have good prospects of long careers working for one of the nation's largest, most successful water utilities. Second, I want to thank the generations of elected officials, city managers, and city attorneys who have overseen the honest and effective administration of our water system, all the way up to the current generation of council members, city manager, city attorney, and outside counsel, who forcefully and capably advocated for the city's interests in the litigation of recent years. Third, about that litigation, while it's true that Fairfax was our adversary in this dispute, it was just that, a legal dispute between two jurisdictions, not a water war with a good side and an evil side. Facts were in contention, multiple courts and judges weighed in, sometimes rulings favored Fairfax, sometimes Falls Church. In the end, an agreement was reached through judicial mediation that I think is a fair deal for Falls Church. Between now and the referendum in November, as our citizens examine the agreement, I look forward to having a chance to explain why I think that its passage will be in the best interest of our taxpayers and will help open doors to a bright future for our city and schools. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
I have a final comment regarding the mediation. I want to especially recognize the work that Ira Kalen did, that our city attorney, John Foster, our city manager, and retained counsel and consultants. When I suggested mediation, I was hoping for a good outcome, and that outcome was produced by the people that I just mentioned. So hats off to each and every one of you for, I think, coming up with what were, under difficult circumstances, a very good result for us. And I want to recognize as well, I think, the role that Fairfax County Board Chairman Bolova played in moving this along through the mediation and this outcome. So, thanks.
Anything else? Alright, if I can have a motion, then we'll open it up for public comment. No? Mr. Kalen?
Trying to write the page, we got some new versions. TR 13-17, as revised on second reading.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second. Would you like to open this item up for public comment? Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any. Ms. Pichao, did we receive any written comments on this? I'm gonna go ahead and close this public for public comment and ask for the roll call vote.
On TR 13-17 revised, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The next item before you, counsel, is TR 13-20, Resolution to Increase Employees' Contribution to the Virginia Retirement System, effective July 1, 2013.
Ms. Shields?
Mayor Baruch, members of council, the, this resolution would change the, is required by the Virginia retirement system to affect the General Assembly's requirement to increase employee contributions to the VRS pension plan, and this affects our constitutional officers and their full-time employees. So with this adoption of this resolution, for FY 13, for all employees of the constitutional officers hired before July 1, 2010, they will be making a 2% contribution to their pension. Employees hired after July 2010 will be making a 4% contribution to their pension, and then employees hired on or after July 1, 2012 are making a 5% contribution to their pension. All those percentages are a percentage of their salary, which goes to the VRS pension plan. This same resolution will need to be adopted three more times, and at the end of three years, then all constitutional officers will be making a 5% contribution pursuant to state law. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Shields? Mr. Kalen?
Quick comment. For the people who are not familiar, that there are five or six separate VRS plans. So when we talk about this plan, it is not the same plan as the teachers...
That is correct.
Okay, so, no confusion about that.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Kalen. Anything else? If I can have a motion, then we'll open it up for public comment. Ms. Berry?
Mayor, I move to adopt TR 13-20.
Can you have a second? That's Mr. Kalen on the second. To open this item up for public comment, are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Pichao, did we receive... Pichau, did we receive any speaker's slip, or I'm sorry, did we receive any written comments?
No, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and close this for public comment and ask for the roll call vote, please.
Miss Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next item is consent, Mr. City Manager?
And Mayor Baruch, members of council, in addition to the appointments that are on the consent calendar, there's one item, and that is authorization for the Mary Riley Sales Library to issue a purchase order to Baker &amp; Taylor in the amount of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the purchase, purchase of library books, audiobooks, compact discs, DVDs for the library for F Y thirteen, for F Y fourteen. And I'll just note that these, these books and other materials for the library are procured through a joint procurement through the Mid-Atlantic Library Alliance, which allows us to get the lowest prices for all of our content that's in the library.
Thank you. Miss Berry, would you like to provide a report for the appointments?
I would. Once again, I, Mr. Duncan and I had a marvelous opportunity to talk to many of the, the individuals that we would like to put forward to, to counsel with our, you know, with our absolute firm backing. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to not only thank current members of these various committees who are willing to once again step up, but new candidates who are willing to come forward with the gate, again, with tremendous expertise and, and great willingness to, to provide, to provide their counsel to, to the city of Falls Church. I, I just wanted to take a moment to, to particularly signal out one individual, David Braun, Health Systems Agency of Northern Virginia. I was frankly unaware of the role that, that, that he played and this agency played in Northern Virginia. I think that Mr. Duncan had, had a better understanding of it, but it once again speaks to the fact that we have extraordinary men and women who are doing marvelous service for this city in very quiet ways that, that I, I knew very little about, so I want to just salute, salute Mr. Braun and of course all of our, all of our candidates. But again, thanking, thanking him for an opportunity to learn about our role in municipal governance. So with, with that, I certainly would recommend this slate of candidates to the full council with, with great enthusiasm.
Thank you. Any questions on consent? If I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please, or the consent items?
Mr. Mayor, I move to, I do this wrong every time. Mr. Mayor, I move to...
Actually, I think...
Come on, Dave, come on. How do I, I...
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The consent agenda.
No, move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Thank you.
If I could have a second, please.
That's why I'm here. And Mr. Snyder, you with a second?
I have a second with thanks to the committee who identified these wonderful candidates. Thank you, and your hard work.
Miss Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Before your next counsel, I think you have your counsel requests.
Counsel, any comments or requests?
Are we on to item twelve?
Yes, we're on twelve. Miss Berry?
I just want to, I mean, I think we've all been aware that there's an issue with an individual with regard to a water billing dispute. I'm, I'm certain we've all been apprised of this, this series of communications, and I just wanted to ask the city manager if he's satisfied that the issue has received full daylight and if there's, if there's something that council needs to do, or if this is, if this is fully in your, in your court, and you feel confident you can move forward and resolve this dispute such as it needs to be resolved.
I do. We, I think that we have the tools that we need, and I think we've, we've tried to handle it in, in a fair and reasonable manner, and I'll keep the council apprised if there are any further developments with it.
Miss Berry, anything else? Mr. Kalin?
Thank you. I have actually two unrelated items I'd like to, to raise. One issue is something that will affect the council long after, or at least after I'm no longer participating as a council member, and that is the events that have happened recently in the markets. There's a great deal of volatility in the markets. The Dow's lost another hundred and thirty-nine points today, probably taking the net losses to close to six, seven hundred points in, in about a week. The reason I raise that now is that this situation, I think the markets will remain unstable, difficult to really project out into the medium term. This then becomes an issue for, if, again, if the referendum is successful, what do we do with the property and how do we manage the use of that property and potential sale in the face of markets that are unstable, and there may or may not be good opportunities at that, at the time that it becomes available to move forward? And, and to Dave Charter, who has mentioned this, and he and I, I believe in agreement, that we don't want to rush into anything that will have a fifty-year impact based on short-term considerations. These would be long-term considerations, and if we need to sit on property until the market's stabilized, rather than a fire sale, or do something that isn't in the best interest of the city, we should so do. I will be raising this again, but I raise it now because of the tangibility of the market instability. We have it right in front of us today, and my read of the, of the markets and the economy is it will remain volatile for quite a while, as the, it would be a little bit dramatic, as the heroin is removed from the system in the form of zero interest rates, and we start to go into withdrawals. We'll see exactly what, what is going to be the outcome, but it won't be right away, and this is the logical consequence of that. Just a heads up, something I think it's going to be, and the next council is really going to have to wrestle with this issue. The other issue, which is not related to the market volatility, is something that was in the Washington Post over the weekend, which was overtime payments to the Fire Department in Montgomery County. And we are in the process of, or in negotiating our inter-jurisdictional agreement with Arlington. What adds a certain sense of poignancy to this is that we heard from our volunteers that they felt that they were being excluded and their role reduced in the activities with Arlington County. See, it's hard not to make a link, may not be accurate. I already contacted the, the city manager about this, but it does lead, one may be incorrect, but is, what we, I'm not aware of exactly how much overtime is built into our contract with, or pending contract with Arlington, whether it's in any way affected by the lessening of volunteer role, will it end up costing us more? Will it be more overtime expected? What happens if additional overtime is needed and it's not built in? I think you raised a good point, Wyatt. Is it pensionable? Are we going to have to pay for the, if it's pensionable, do we pay for that in the form of obligations going forward to enter, at the inter-jurisdictional agreement? So these are questions I think may be useful in light of the fact this was front-page news for Montgomery County, and some of the numbers that they produced were quite impressive in terms of the additional cost and additional salaries that individuals made through regularized overtime. So I would greatly appreciate if we could look into that and make sure we're not going to get stuck with unexpected expenses going forward, and that it's not related in any way to the effort to marginalize, my word, the volunteer, Falls Church volunteers who have done a great job and clearly wish to continue to do a good job, a great job, but don't seem to be as welcomed as they would like to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Just a question for Mr. Shields. July first, Monday, the planning commission still planning to have a listening session or an event on split lot development, as was discussed earlier?
I have to confirm the exact date. I know that they are having that session, but I don't know whether they're having it on the first, and so if I could get back with the council.
Okay. I just, you know, a couple of people have raised that issue with me and moving around town, and I wanted to be able to tell them where to go to be heard officially, so thanks for that. Also, I just want to thank the mayor for his comments on behalf of the council at Jesse Thackeray's one-hundredth birthday party yesterday at Marilyn Henderson Middle School. Manager was there, the vice mayor, it was a great event, and thank the mayor for representing the council.
All right, other council members? Mr. Carter?
Just have a question to, for the city manager. What's the status of that traffic light at Pennsylvania Avenue? Is that on track?
We have, we needed to acquire, get an easement on additional property. We've acquired that easement, and so we're, basically all obstacles have been removed out of the way. It's in preliminary engineering, and we expect it will be out to bid shortly. So let me, I will get back with council on a date for that, but that is, at the present time, the top priority for the traffic division in, in the city, to get that signal installed.
Great. And how about on TJ? Is TJ also on track?
TJ is on schedule and, and on budget, and we had the opportunity to take a tour of the, of the school with the superintendent about a month ago. The mayor was there and council member Duncan, and we did confirm at that meeting that the, the project is on time and, and on, on budget. The main activity that's happening at the TJ right now is everyone's moving all the furnishings out of the old building so that they can do the renovation work and the cafeteria work in the old building that was the phase two of that project. And, and so that's, I think, probably where the real crunch is, to get that work done and get everything back in the building well in advance of school opening in September.
I wonder if the city, the appropriate person in the city could take a look at some of the on-street parking. It just seems to me that there's plenty of locations where we're not really efficiently using the on-street parking we have. In other words, the signs saying, "Don't park to the corner," are kind of stuck into the street pretty good. I think we could get some more on-street parking in some of our locations if we would kind of reexamine them to see if, in fact, there's ability to get a couple of spots here and there, particularly given the fact that parking is at such a premium here and that, you know, it's an issue with our businesses and the like. I'm not an expert on traffic engineering, but I do park on occasion on streets, and it seems to me there are plenty of places where we might have to pick up a couple parking spaces here or there, and I'm just wondering if anybody's taken a look at that in, in recent days or recent years.
Well, it, I can get back with you in more depth, but I will say that we do get a lot of requests for parking signs in the city, and it comes from residents of a given street, and they're concerned about how close people are to the intersection or parking in the intersection, and they're concerned about blocking their view as they, as they pull out. And so rather than trying to negotiate each one, we do try to stick to the standard, which is twenty-five feet, and, and that's the general rule. And so there, I think there probably, if you go around the city, you probably could find some exceptions to that rule, but that's the rule that we try to adhere to. But I can have a conversation with our traffic folks. I know that there have been some commentary about signs that have appeared on some streets in the city, I think Columbia being one, as we were, that effort really was just to replace some old rusty signs with some new signs, but that occasioned some comments that I received in the city manager's office about that. And so if, if there are any other questions about parking signs, if council would like to forward those to me, and I can get a report out as to the types of questions we're getting and requests that we're getting and how we're handling them.
Mine's really not so much concerned about residential areas, but more just associated with commercial areas, immediate, you know, surrounding commercial areas, a way to maximize on-street parking.
Mr. Kalin?
Just anecdotal. When we first moved to Foster's just, you know, ten years ago, we're close to commercial on Park Avenue. There was no parking problems on Park Avenue, it was open all the time, so you really didn't worry about the signs. But with Spectrum and others, the, the traffic, everything, so we end up having to ask for the signs. It was sort of a nasty cycle. As we get more congested, we ended up having to reduce the number of parking spaces precisely when we need more. And that's the process, because it was becoming very dangerous as people would park right up to the, to the cutout, and you couldn't see who was coming down the road. So we had to ask for, we had two, we have two driveways, so we had to have four additional signs to do that, and that cut out some spaces, which we hadn't needed when Park Avenue was a lot quieter. This is, this is what we're facing in the city.
All right. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you. Just to follow on in the conversation, I think particularly in the Winter Hill area, this issue has, has arisen, and hopefully there can be a review of that. Again, we don't want to create an unsafe circumstance, but there's a particular shortage of parking spaces in that area, so I wonder if you could specifically review that to make sure that, that's, whatever is being done is absolutely necessary for safety, considering the nature of the streets and the neighborhood. So that would be point number one. Point number two, additional issues on transportation. Recall that under the new transportation funding bill, there are two pots of money, the seventy percent money and the thirty percent money. Seventy percent money, there's a lot of pressure to only allow that money to be spent on a few, primarily road projects in the western part of the region. Suffice it to say that we'll be strongly recommending a more diverse set of projects, including the city's own projects, and anyone who doubts the regional significance of the roads in our city would only need to put a, a toll gate that once existed, actually, on either Route seven or Route twenty-nine, and I think you would see a rather immediate regional impact. So I, I think that point needs to be driven home. The second point with regard to the thirty percent money, we are in fact, under our CIP, allocating more, significantly more transportation dollars than we have in the recent past, so there may be actions that this council will need to take to maximize our ability to take advantage of the thirty percent money, because after all, our citizens will be paying the taxes that would go into that. So that's just sort of an awareness issue for the future. Secondly, I've been approached by at least one citizen and perhaps some others to have the council look at potential action regarding the Citizens United case, and I'm just mentioning that as an awareness issue at this point. I'm sure there'll be further discussion in one way or another, so I'm just indicating that that request is there. Finally, I wanted to commend everyone involved with the Tanner Hill Blues Festival, a wonderful event. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I? I'm sorry. Just looking into the audience, and as a former journalist, I believe this is the last opportunity we'll have to meet before Mr. Taylor, Andre of Foster H O L Patch, moves from our city, and I just wanted to take a second to thank him for covering our government affairs here for the last year and a half or so, maybe longer, and also being involved in our community, the school athletic program, and in other things, and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just two quick comments. As Mr. Duncan noted, I had the opportunity to represent council at Jesse Thackeray's one-hundredth birthday, which was incredible, so it was quite daunting to be part of that, I should say. Just really, really nice event, and included, I believe I was sitting, well, there was, there was some, she had started a sorority while she was in college, and there was some of the current, I believe, sorority members who came out. So, all the way from, from Kansas. So it was, it was just great to be part of that event, and really extraordinary personally. So for all the members of the community who have not had a chance to meet Jesse, please take the opportunity to... And there was some of the current, I believe, sorority members who came out. So, all the way from Kansas. So it was, it was just great to be part of that event and really extraordinary personally. So for all the members of the community who have not had a chance to meet Jesse, please take the opportunity to meet her and get to know her. And we have several members of the community that are really our warbearers in setting up the city. So it's just always humbling and great to be part of those events. On a not-so-fun note, I received a constituent call this evening about some trash and dumping issues that apparently are still going on at the West End Shopping Center. So, Mr. Shields, if you can, take a look at that. Again, I think this has been an ongoing issue and problem. I haven't had a chance to directly talk to our citizen who raised that, but it was raised in a voicemail to me this evening.
Johanna and I have to weigh in here because I actually had the opportunity to speak with the citizen who also called. And Johanna has had numerous opportunities. And the West End Shopping Center situation, we were able to get the staff on this and, you know, Herculean efforts are being made. More needs to be done, you know, blah, 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 to come, to come. I mean, it's a tough situation. There are dumpsters, you know, associated with commercial properties across town that are enclosed and secured. And then right on the property line next door, there are dumpsters which are basically, they may be shielded, but they're open and available. And, you know, people bring all manner of things there. And that is the case at the West End. You know, doors, debris, plaits, all sorts of stuff lying around. You know, we would have to have a staff person assigned to go there every day to bird dog it. And there's gotta be a better way to do it than that. So I guess, since the mayor brought it up, I would ask maybe if we could have a staff consideration of the inequity of some commercial properties which are required to secure, enclose and secure, and others which are not. That just doesn't seem fair. Certainly, the former approach works better to minimize dumping and trash lying about. Thanks.
Mr. Kellin?
Why are we on this topic here? While you're looking into this matter, you, you know, the Gordon Road recycling area?
Yes.
I have seen a refrigerator there outside, not on the, so you may want to take a look at that. That's quite liberally used as a general dump as well. And it says you have a video camera. But I don't think, I don't think people are too affected by that. While we're talking about trash and... And un...
Refrigerator Phil? On that note, I will make a plug for, I believe that we have an agreement with Fairfax County that allows us to do some, utilize their facility. It's a small fee. Wyatt, you're looking at me puzzled. What's, do you remember the name of the facility? I'm blanking on it. It's the West Ox.
Yeah, that's right. But, so people, if they have a truck, they can take, they can take materials out directly to the West Ox transfer station. Or they can call the city public works department and arrange for a special pickup. And what, the fee that we charge is basically the cost to tip it at the West End station plus the fuel to get it there. We pick it up at a...
West Ox.
West Ox, yeah. And so people can also hire a private contractor to take that stuff away. But the city, I believe, is the lowest-cost service provider for those types of special pickups. And so that's, that's what people are supposed to do. It is true that at the property yard, at the recycling center, despite the fact that, I think it actually is generally a pretty tidy and well-kept recycling center, that naturally sometimes people break the rules. And we do have that area under surveillance. And I would simply state that I think our folks are pretty vigilant about keeping up with people who drop things off illicitly. And a refrigerator with the free on and the things in it, there is a disposal charge with that. And so that's one that we would actually take some effort to make sure we try to catch up with that individual.
First of all, it's a lot of fun to blame Phil for everything, right? Is that what we're doing? Yeah, Phil and his refrigerator. But I do want to send a shout-out to city staff. Mr. Duncan and I did have an opportunity to talk to Bill Hicks, to Allison Lawrence. They have done extraordinary efforts to ensure that everybody is compliant. As Mr. Duncan did say, there does seem to be an interesting, not a discrepancy, but an inequity about the requirements for existing versus new buildings. But I, and I'm sure Mr. Duncan would agree with me, that I think the city staff has done yeoman's efforts to make sure that folks are compliant. And I would like to, I would like to think that city businesses would like to step up to the plate. It's, I, while it is Allison's job to ensure that, you know, garbage is dealt with in a regular and appropriate fashion, one would like to think that city businesses would also have a sense of propriety and that they would also be able to pick up their own trash as well. So I'm sure we all agree that city staff does, does an extraordinary job of making certain that, you know, that folks are compliant. And we'd like to see, I would like to see certainly more effort by businesses to pick up their end of it as well. But I think we've talked enough trash here tonight. Yep, okay.
If I can add one?
Oh, we haven't.
Well, I mean, if we're talking about getting the business community involved, perhaps our liaisons to the chamber can raise that as a way of just getting the business community aware that this issue's come up and that we would request that the chamber members and the business community get this word out as a way of dealing with it. I think that would be good. And Mr. Tarter, I believe you're on that. And I'm the alternate. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Wyatt, I saw an email. So is it accurate that there are no sparklers allowed on the 4th of July within the whole city of Falls Church?
It doesn't include sparklers, I don't think. I'm looking around.
I thought it did, actually. I was a bit surprised.
I was upset about the little snakes that I sent, they set off. You know, my little charcoal snakes. Those are allowed, aren't they?
Let me, let me check with...
Could we get Tom on the horn? You'll get back to us on July 5th.
All right, that's it. All right. Anything else, dare I ask? All right. That takes us through the agenda. Or, I'm sorry, we have approval of minutes. We have one set. June 10th, anything on this?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to point out that I did hand some typographical errors, et cetera, to the city clerk who generously has dealt with them. But that was my, well, I mean, she was very generous in not hitting me over the head with my, with my comments. But other than that, I'm certainly happy to move them forward.
Other, other council members, anything? Right, if I can get a motion to adopt the Monday, June 10th minutes?
Mayor, I move to adopt the June 10, 13 draft minutes as amended.
How about you move to adopt?
Move to adopt the minutes.
Minutes from Monday, June 10th?
But as amended.
Oh, as amended, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, as amended, yeah, okay.
All right, if I can get a second, please? Mr. Duncan on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? One abstention, that's Mr. Snyder on the abstention. I believe that's because he wasn't here. Okay. Shields, are we gonna be taking up any business when we come out?
Counsel, I don't have any new information that I was anticipating to have for the discussion on the inter-jurisdictional contract. So I think we can bypass that.
Okay, so we don't need to go into closed session? Okay, that takes us through our agenda. Anything else, council members? Go home to our families. All right, if I can get a motion to adjourn, please? That's Mr. Kellin on the motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
That's Ms. Berry on the second. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and have a great 4th of July.